Good evening. I call this pre-meeting briefing of the Carrollton Farmers Branch ISD Board of Trustees to order at 6:00 PM on September 5th, 2024. The purpose of this pre-meeting briefing is to conduct a session with administrative staff regarding the posted agenda for the regular board meeting that will take place at 7:00. For the record, board members present are Tara Herbocic, Carolyn Benavides, Kim Brady, Marjorie Barnes, Cassandra Hatfield, and me, Randy Shackman. We've been notified by Eliana Garza-Rosas that she is en route. She will be here momentarily, but sometimes traffic in Dallas is a little worse than you expected. Anyway, we do constitute a quorum, and we can conduct business on behalf of the district. Our, the next item on our agenda is recognitions. And Ms. Purnell, I'm going to turn it over to you.
And Dr. Eldridge and members of the board, please join me in welcoming the following new administrators to the CFB family. First, we'd like to welcome Mr. Charles Kets. Charles is the new CFB Project Manager. Mr. Kets' professional career highlights include experience in national medical OR integration, AV estimating, startup partnerships, and for the past eight years, he has worked in residential construction management. Mr. Kets has a Bachelor of Business degree from Northwood University. Welcome to the CFB family. Next, we would like to introduce you to Francisco Miranda Jr., and he has already started with us, but we wanted to make sure and formally introduce you to him. He brings nearly two decades of educational experience to his new role as Area Director of School Leadership. Mr. Miranda holds a Bachelor of Business Administration from Norwood University and a Master's in Educational Leadership from the University of Texas in Austin. Mr. Miranda's educational journey began as an elementary bilingual education teacher, and he has held leadership positions at middle and high school levels, including assistant principal and principal. So again, welcome to the CFB family, and I believe you have your wife here with you tonight as well. So we'd like to welcome you and congratulations. Next, I would like to introduce you to Carla Settle. She's our new Chief Financial Officer. She will join the CFB family in the near future, and Carla is a native of Kingsville, Texas, hailing from a family of educators who have served Texas public schools for four generations. Carla earned her accounting degree with a minor in English from the Rawls College of Business at Texas Tech University. Yes. Her professional experience includes work in nonprofit and higher education organizations. Before transitioning into K-12 school finance, she served in various roles in nonprofits, as I mentioned, as well as higher education, and her roles in public ed include a variety of different positions, including Chief Financial Officer, most recently in Cedar Hill ISD. So welcome, and I believe you have your husband with you tonight as well, so. So you know, part of being in a family is having a family portrait. So at this time, we would like to ask you to step out. We'd like to get your pictures, and again, we're all here to support you and let us know if there's anything we can do to help you in your new roles.
The next item on our agenda is Audience for Guests. This is an opportunity for people to speak to the board. If you are wanting to speak, you need to have signed up and filled out a form to let us know that you were going to do that, and the forms are usually due about 5:00 in the afternoon. Do we have any here for this? No, we do not for this current pre-meeting session, so thank you. We'll go right on through to our next agenda item, which is Administrative Reports. And Dr. Eldridge, I'll turn it over to you.
Okay, we have one pre-meeting report tonight, and it is Item 5E on the agenda. Our, in our local agreement with our GO Center work study, so we're ready.
Thank you. Dr. Eldridge, Mr. Shackman, and members of the board, thank you all so much for letting me come and join you guys tonight to talk about the GO Centers. I just want to give you a little historical context. I created an infographic that will kind of help channel through our conversation tonight, but originally, GO Centers were actually created down in Laredo, Texas, to help at-risk Hispanic students. Then the Texas Higher, I mean, excuse me, the Higher Education Coordinating Board got involved and said, man, we need to increase educational access for students. So fast forward a little farther, they created Senate Bill 1050, which then supported this creation of the G-Force GO Centers. So in our G-Force GO Centers, it's actually a work-study mentorship program. It is free to CFB. This creates college access and career awareness, we don't forget careers, for the high school students, the parents, and provides bilingual support. And right now, in high schools, we have 2,542-ish emergent bilinguals who definitely need that extra support for their college and career dreams. So they were established in our high schools. Every one of our high schools has a room that's called a GO Center, and in that room, it's staffed with our CCMR dean, as well as these GO Center collegiate members. Current, or actually, not currently, let's talk about last year. So last year, we had MOUs in GO Centers that ran with UNT, TWU, and UTD. UNT, we're still working through some MOU agreements with our attorneys to make sure that it's suitable for both parties, but TWU is the item that we're asking for consent for tonight. And then UTD unfortunately lost their funding. However, I've already started conversations with UTA to continue to support our campuses. The GO Centers in CFB started when CCMR started around two, excuse me, in 2019. We created a complimentary team of very diverse people with diverse backgrounds, counseling backgrounds, tech backgrounds, could speak multiple languages, and then we're paying for those CCMR deans through the outcome bonus. Those contributions through the GO Center is rigorous data tracking. You're going to hear tonight some great CCMR growth from the 23-24 after my first year as the CCMR coordinator. We also manage the GO Centers, and then of course, we plan the events, host community partners and the colleges to those. If we look here for our goals, ultimately, for our district to continue to show that we support students in their post-secondary institutions, whether it's career or college, ultimately, we need to make sure that these students take ownership, and that's part of what the GO Centers do. We are teaching students to take ownership of all of that paperwork process, all of their own goals. Other benefits, honestly, the list is really long. They get personal advice on college applications, career planning, sports recruiting, financial aid. We provide computers, printers, scanners, as well as notaries for those students, so they don't have to go outside and pay for that. We offer trainings like SAT prep. If we decide to add ACT, we plan on doing that as well. We help read scores and invite the military in to talk about the ASFAB, TAFSA scholarships. I mean, it's just incredible, not to mention the fact that they get mentored by college students who are in that current experience. It's also a place of parent engagement where we invite parents in to also join in the college process, and we're continuing to develop that. But ultimately, the long-term benefit and impact is we are positively influencing every single day their educational and career paths. My favorite part of my infographic is this number. When I came into this position, I was trying to do a lot to evaluate ways that we could grow CCMR, and I asked my CCMR deans to be able to track these students and to make sure that we meet their needs, to create a QR code. So every time a student came to them and worked with them, they had to fill out a QR code, not a pre-QR code, but a QR code when they actually met. We had over 5,000 visits with our CCMR coordinators in the GO Centers and with those colleges. I mean, that's incredible, so it's a service that we're providing. So our GO Centers are just an opportunity to create an in-home college experience for our students, and we just appreciate your years of support and hope that we can continue.
Thank you, Aurora. I just have one quick clarification. So I think in our agenda, it said that it was Creekview and Smith. Is that just for TWU, or, because you noted that they're at every campus, and I just wanted you to clarify that for us, because I didn't know the answer.
Yeah, no, yeah, no problem at all. So yes, the TW MOU is the one that is going to cover Creekview and Smith. UTA, we hope, is going to help serve Turner, and then UNT has in the past served Ranchview and ECHS, along with Dallas College at ECHS.
I have one question, and then we'll ask you, board members, if you have any questions as well. This sounds like avid on steroids.
Yes, except avid does a little bit more of the academic work, right, to get them along the way, but yes, yes, sir.
Okay, and that's exciting. You might also define CCMR if there are people watching this. That's an acronym that they might or might not know.
Thank you, sorry about that. Yes, CCMR stands for College Career and Military Readiness.
Great, thank you. Board members, any questions for Ms. St. Lawrence?
Thank you. This is so exciting. I noticed down here, it speaks, or it's written that support for 504 and special ed, what percentage of that 52, 5300 visits was for those students? Do you know? Or how often do you, or what kind of support do you offer them?
So that's a great question. With the visits, we don't delineate based on their student identifiers in that way. However, we do provide extra support where we provide presentations, and we actually have some of our Spanish-speaking deans go into the ESL classrooms for the events where we have to get Dallas County Promise and those kinds of things to make sure that they understand that process.
Board members, any other questions? Yes, Ms. Hatfield.
Thank you so much for the information. This is great information. Can you explain a little bit more about the student outcome charts for us?
Yes, absolutely. So with our Dallas County Promise partnership, so CCMR accountability is, you know, has multiple layers, right? Many indicators that feed into that, but this specifically is data from our Dallas County Promise path forms last year. This is 90%, 95% completed through the deans and the GO Centers, and our percentages are higher than most other districts, and some districts by several percentage points. And that Dallas County Promise path form is the opportunity for students to actually have a last dollar tuition waiver to multiple partners. And what that means is if they complete the path form, FAFSA and the college app through the Dallas County Promise path, if they do those things, that whatever school they go to within those partnerships, the financial aid that is not covered will pay for any form of tuition that is left on the remaining balance. So it's an incredible scholarship opportunity without actually applying for a scholarship. And then the other part is following our FAFSA, right? So our FAFSA numbers for the 2024 year are again incredibly high as well, because as you may or may not have heard, our FAFSA within the nation has, had been termed a little bit of a fiasco. It was very challenging. Right now, the, it's about 21% down in enrollment across the nation because of FAFSA, and we were still able to work with these students and get them help and complete with FAFSA and TAFSA for some of our undocumented students.
Any other questions, board members? Ms. St. Lawrence, thank you very much. An exciting program.
Yes, thank you, thank you.
I believe that's all of the administrative reports that we have, and so our agenda would next go for Item 5, and that would be a briefing session with administration regarding posted agenda items. Our next item then would be to take a look at our consent agenda. The consent agenda is an option for boards to use to collect a number of items in one vote, and these are procedural items, and the board has been notified and given a lot of information to review and study about all of these prior to our meeting now. We have a request regarding the consent agenda to remove and strike Item 5N, as in Norman, 5N, to remove that, the purchase of display panels for classrooms from the consent agenda. It will be brought back at a later time when it is decided that there is a greater need, but we are going to strike that. I need a motion then from the board. Do we have a motion to strike Item 5N? Yes.
I make the motion to strike Item 5N from the consent agenda.
Okay, we have a motion to strike Item 5N. Is there a second? Cassandra Hatfield has seconded that. Any discussion, questions, comments? All in favor of striking 5N from the consent agenda, please raise your hand. Okay, with the vote of 7-0, that item is struck from the consent agenda. Are there any other questions about the consent agenda? Yes, Ms. Hatfield?
I just want to let you know that I am planning to pull Item 5F for individual consideration.
That was 5F?
5F as in blank, yes.
Okay, any other comments? Okay. I believe this brings us to the end of our current agenda, and so we have reached the point where we will close this pre-meeting briefing, and we are adjourned at 6:16 PM.
Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the Carrollton Farmers Branch ISD Board of Trustees on September 5th, 2024. Board members, district staff members, and members of the audience, you are free to join me in standing. Reverend Really Rainwater of Christ Community Connections will provide us a message for the evening, and Kim Brady will lead us in our pledge to the U.S. flag. Tara Hibachek will lead us in our pledge to the Texas flag.
Standing, I'm going to ask you to just take a few minutes and let your mind clear out. I'm going to ask you to have a few words in your own mind and spirit for those kids and family that had difficulty and been attacked by evil spirits this week. So if you would, just meditate in your own spirit and your own mind. Ask God to move up and bless those in difficult, struggling, don't know where to do, what the way, or the way to go, and there's so many things going on. And so we could whirlwind just for a few minutes, please. Yes, Lord. Yes, yes, yes. Oh, 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 Lord. Father, we thank you for this wonderful evening you give us the chance to be able to stand. We thank you, Lord, for this great evening you give us the chance to come share in love and smile with each other here in Carrollton, Texas. Father, we ask you to teach us and give us knowledge, to give us direction. Give us, Father God, the understanding of all these problems and killings going on in our school district. Father, we just surrender ourselves to you, crack our hand to you, that we really need you, Lord. We're very confused. Father God, we have put money into school. We have spent time, but that's not working for us, Lord. So we ask you to bless us tonight, Father, because we know that you, you are a rock and you are a protector. Father God, we ask you to bless the family. Father, because you believe in foundation, and there's no family without foundation, we're not going to have a good school district. Move, Lord. Let your spirit move and speak to us as we stand here today. Understanding, Father God, without a strong foundation, family, there are not going to be a great community. Thank you, Lord. Teachers can give us understanding, Lord. Without the family that you asked us to build, they're not going to be strong churches without the family that you created to be. And the way you created it is going to be a weak world. Father, we found ourselves in a bad situation tonight, so we call upon you to have mercy upon us. Teachers, teachers, guide us, direction. We're in a lost world now. But Lord God, we know that you are strength in time of trouble. Strength, Father God, to family. Father God, we understand the school not building weapons. The school not shooting nobody. We understand, Lord, God is coming from the home foundation. We got to build the foundation again. And the structure of marriage, Father God, that you've called us to do. We thank you and we just praise you. We know, Lord God, that you are hope. We're not going to give up. You are salvation, Lord. We're not going to give up. Father God, have mercy upon Carrollton here. Ask you to bless these leaders, Father God, to lead them and direct their path, Lord God. We pray they be arm enough for, Lord God, to when you whisper to their ear, they'll listen. And their hearts should be open. Understand, Father God, our kids are just begging from the family of love. We thank you, Lord. We ask you, Lord, to bless our teachers. Bless these students, oh Father, they are confused. They have no love at home. They have nowhere to come to. They can't even eat a meal at home. Have to come to school, oh Lord God, to get a meal. Oh my God, have mercy upon us today. Lord, bless us. Bless our families, Lord. Bless this world. Oh my God. Father, have mercy upon us. Father, bless the leadership here. Bless the superintendent, Father God. Continue to protect her and lead her, Lord God. Protect it, principled, Lord God. Put a protecting around them, Father. So much danger is going on, Lord. Give them what they need, Lord God. Cover them, because you are the strength. Ask you to bless our kids, Father. They afraid to come to school. Some afraid to stay at home, don't know where to go. Father, just have mercy upon us. Bless my people. Bless your people. Father, bless you. Father, bless America. Bless America. Bless your family, Lord, in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands: One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor of the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state, under God, one indivisible.
Thank you. Please be seated. As a district, we dedicate all of our efforts and resources to our goal of high expectations for all. The board uses this goal to guide all deliberations, decisions, and actions. And you're going to get to see those deliberations, decisions, and actions in open session, with the exception of just a few things that are stipulated by Texas government code for us to be in closed session to discuss those. Those items typically deal with personnel matters and consultation with our attorney or real estate. For the record tonight, the board members present are Tara Hibachek, Kim Brady, Marjorie Barnes, Carolyn Benavides, Eliana Garza Rojas, Cassandra Hatfield, and me, Randy Shackman. We do constitute a quorum, and we may conduct business on behalf of the district. And just before we launch into our agenda, we want to recognize a very special guest who's walking and not even feet touching the ground, principal of Creekview High School, Mr. Leon Shulak. And I know he's smiling. We chose as a board to wear Creekview shirts tonight to honor their first football win in two years. Congratulations to Creekview. Let's keep it going. All right. Before moving on to the first agenda item, I would like to remind you that the board will accept comments from citizens of the district and district employees, any persons wanting to talk to the board at Audience for Guests. Audience for Guests works by submitting a form. Those forms are available at the district's website. You can submit them, and we ask that ask that they be turned in by the deadline of 5:00 p.m. prior to the meeting. When we get to Agenda Item 3, Audience for Guests, those who have submitted forms will be asked to come forward and invited to speak to the board. Item number two on our agenda is Special Presentations and Recognitions. And our recognitions, Ms. Parnell?
Good evening, President Shackman, Dr. Eldridge, and members of the board. Tonight, we want to announce our CFB Champion Award for September. Sponsored by CFB and Chick-fil-A at Trinity Mills, the CFB Champion Award recognizes teachers, employees, students, and/or community members for exemplifying and demonstrating excellence. The September CFB Champion Award is presented to Davis Elementary School teachers Genesis Flores and Jessica Ransom. These two remarkable teachers were recently presented with the American Heart Association's Heart Saber Hero Award for using their training in critical thinking skills to save a student's life. During a field trip at the end of last school year, a student was eating on the bus when he began to choke. Ms. Flores and Ms. Ransom quickly jumped into action by clearing the student's airway. The student then experienced an asthma attack, and once again, the teachers administered aid by helping the student with his inhaler and keeping him calm. Now, you have to remember, this was all happening on a bus, and it was a moving bus. So they kept their composure and also saved the student's life. We want to recognize you both for this outstanding act of service and incredible act of love. We appreciate you. Congratulations. Thank you, and that concludes our recognitions.
Ms. Flores and Ms. Ransom, we often say that teachers make a difference in kids' lives. Wow, you really did. Thank you so much for your quick thinking and for your care for our students. Next item on our agenda are committee updates. I'd like to start by sharing little information about the TIP program. Ms. Susan Machiel and I had the opportunity recently to attend this program presentation out at the Denton Courthouse. Denton has put together a program for student intervention focused largely on truancy, but on a number of other minor crimes and issues that are being faced and struggled with by the lives of families in Denton County. And it is an exciting program, and we are looking at some ways that parts of that program may be able to be brought here so that we can serve families and students better, to meet all of their needs in the area. And it was exciting. It's the TIP program, so keep your ears open, and you'll be listening to hear about things like that. Are there other updates, board members? No, got it, okay. All right. Dr. Eldridge, are there district announcements?
Okay, I'm so excited that Creekview won. It was such a great, I took snacks to the coaches because, and of course, they were like, well, we're breaking down film. Our kids left it all on the field, so they've now got to win game two. So we're excited that our sports season has kicked off, and our teams are doing well. So I hope everybody gets an opportunity to go see volleyball or football. It's always exciting to watch kids compete. I have to remind everybody that it is Attendance Awareness Month, and so we need everybody in school. Attendance is money, and we need your money. So you need to be in school, and you need to do well in school. I want to brag on Hope Keen and Chris Julian. Our school district was chosen to be a TEA Innovation Cohort. So Hope and I and Chris were on a Zoom call with TEA, and Hope and Chris did all the legwork and completed the application, and we were one of the district's chosen. So we just found out, so now we have to find out all the work we have to do. But what a great honor to be chosen to be an Innovation Cohort, and that's, I just want to thank you both for all the hard work you do. And the next exciting, yes, we can't do it without that. The next exciting thing that's happening is the board. We are, as a team, are going to serve hamburgers and tea and chips to our campuses. So it starts next week, so you all will get a sign-up sheet, and we just look forward to being a part of the campuses and providing a meal. So we're just super excited about that. So that will be happening throughout the semester. So we're going to make sure we get to every campus and department and eat lots of hamburgers. So it'll be fun. So that's all I have. Well, no, I have one more thing. Our Attendance Awareness, Dawn Parnell and her team have created a little, it's not a TikTok, but it's something on social media. So it is TikTok. I just learned very demure and very mindful is the phrase that one of the board members taught. Thank you, Dawn, and your team. And not only does attendance matter for a district, it matters for our student performance. And if our students aren't in school, they're not learning. So we need to make sure that we're teaching them. And our heart goes out to our teachers, because if our students aren't there, you've got to catch them up. And so we just need everybody in school to learn and to enjoy everything they do. You can see the happy faces already. That's all I have.
Thank you. Dr. Julian, Hope, Ms. Keen, there are just over 1,000 school districts in Texas, and that we've been selected is an honor, and we look forward to all the good work you get to do to live up to this all. Congratulations again. And while we are very excited for Creekview High School, we'd like to also point out that my sons are alumni of our Turner, and they won their first game in about a billion years this weekend. And we are extremely happy for the success of all our fall athletic programs.
Dr. Eldridge, President Shackman, and the esteemed board, let's start with the PTA motto, "To make every child's potential a reality by engaging and empowering communities to advocate for all children." The PTA year is in full swing. At this time, council has 4,195 members. Three schools, Farmers Branch Elementary, Lavalita Elementary, and, sorry, and Polk Middle School, have already surpassed their status, or their member, already surpassed their membership number from last year. Thirty-two of our 36 PTAs have reached active and/or good standing status for this year. The best way to join a PTA is to go to joinpta.org and find the campus where you want to join. You can also reach out to your campus PTA and join through their programs. Another way to support multiple PTAs is through the Council PTA website store at www.cfbpta.org. Here, you can join all 36 at once or a feeder pattern of your choice. We currently have six champions of CFB and four members of feeder patterns. Thank you to our 10 champions. We will be hosting our Fall Training Extravaganza this month on September 28th at 9:00 a.m. at the Nancy Watten Center. This is open to all board members or people interested in board service at any of our 36 campuses. As part of this event, we will be hosting a small vendor fair. Please look out for our RSVP Google forum. We will be coordinating a donation drive for Metrocrest. It will be running September 30th through, sorry, my bad, September 30th through October 4th. It will be benefiting Metrocrest. We're going to be focusing on socks, t-shirts, underwear. They have also asked that we focus on toiletries and feminine hygiene products. More information will be coming. I'm still working out the details, but I will be getting that information out to the campuses and our PTAs. This year, we will be kicking off monthly awards for different PTA challenges. Our first challenge is the best, I thought I was going to read it, and then we're due to the picture. Okay, sorry. Our first challenge is the best back-to-school event. There will be one award for elementary and one for secondary schools to be awarded at the September school board meeting. Details will be sent to all local PTAs shortly. Our first delegate meeting is Wednesday, September 11th at 6:30 p.m., right here in the admin boardroom. Now for the fun stuff. We conducted a challenge for August for one primary school and one secondary school. The requirements were for the most creative/fun back-to-school event and meeting the Texas PTA Head Start Award requirement of 75% of last year's PTA membership. We would now like to announce our winners. Please come up when called to get your certificates and join us in the lobby at break so we can take pictures. The primary school award goes to Lavalita Elementary, who celebrated back-to-school with a movie night for all grade levels. They had a huge turnout with 160 kiddos. They were able to get pizza donated from local pizza places, and Sam's donated $100 for popcorn, fruit chews, and waters. The secondary school winner is Blalack Middle School, who hosted their second annual Blalack Bash. The bash is a family event where families could come and enjoy the band, visit some of the clubs that are at the school, Boy Scout, Girl Scout troops, dunk a staff member, I've got to find out which staff member got dunked, and get needed items from Metrocrest. The event was free for our families. There was laughter, fun, and a community spirit. Anybody from Blalack? Okay, okay, we'll get it to them. Our September challenge will be announced at our delegate meeting next week. Apologies.
Ms. Yan, thank you very much. Now, I believe we have an update from the Education Foundation.
Good evening, Dr. Eldridge, President Shackman, and esteemed school board members. It is a joy and a privilege to be here this evening, and on behalf of the Education Foundation, we want to thank you for your support. We are surrounded in the room tonight with several members of the Ed Foundation Board, so I want to thank you all for being with us this evening. Thank you. Tonight, we are so excited to provide you with some updates from the Ed Foundation from the, since the last time we presented. August started out for us with our annual campaign kickoff, where we had a full house of current and prospective donors at Amici. The group heard from four recent grant recipients, and we were treated to a drone exhibit where CFB students had coded the drone. So we were very excited. It was very fun, and I didn't know, I've never seen a drone in action, and I was a little bit fearful for a second that something might happen, but nothing did. We jumped right into our employee giving campaign that has been sponsored this year and last year by RBFCU, and we are sparing no expense to finish the campaign with fun and exciting food parties and more for the campuses that are the most engaged. On August 30th, we officially opened our innovative grant online application, and I checked just this evening, we already have five applications. We'll be hosting, teaming with the Innovation Academy, and hosting a training on September 11th online, if anyone would like to join us. The last, and probably the most important item on my agenda this evening, is to share a snapshot of our 23-24 district support and activity. This past year, the Ed Foundation raised $311,000 from generous donors. I see smiles. That's a 54% increase over the prior year. We're determined to fully support our campuses, and we are thrilled to share 24,386 students were impacted with our Innovative and Impact Now grants. You'll see that in the red. The gray represents, the darker gray represents the CFB Giving House, where 1,224 students have been impacted. The light gray represents our Strategic Mission Grants. I'm thrilled to say, and I know you're going to say, you noticed there's some similarity in numbers, 24,386 were impacted with the strategic grants and 76 students with our student senior scholarships. This, for us, represents a first. If you're scrolling down on that slide, you see 100% of our students have been impacted by grants from the Education Foundation, and that is an absolute first for the Ed Foundation. We know that there are duplications, but we funded two major initiatives. One was in student nutrition, and, oh, sorry, student health services, and we know that that impacted, or was due to impact 100% of our campuses. The second were our Great Start Grants that have already hit, that are already hitting inboxes and accounts to provide campuses with support to start the school year. We could not be more excited. Ending it up, our October promises to be even bigger and better. I'm telling you, we've got some big announcements, and I'd have to just wink, wink. If you know me and you talk to me for any time more than five minutes, you know that I start talking about book vending machines, and we are on our way to number nine, so I'm super excited. In the meanwhile, we want to thank you for your support and for entrusting us to support the CFB ISD and our students. Thank you.
Ms. Wald, thank you. Board members, any questions? We simply exhort you to keep up the good work.
We promise we will. Thank you.
Sometimes at this point, we take a break because, just to give people a chance, if you were here for some of the recognitions or whatever, we're going to just simply take a stand-up stretch break and then go right on with our meeting. So if you'd like to take a quick stand-up, and if you need to go, you're welcome to. You're certainly welcome, and we would love it if you would stay. Okay, thank you. Next item on our agenda is Audience for Guests. Again, persons who wish to speak to the board must have submitted their form on Again, persons who wish to speak to the board must have submitted their form online for this purpose. We do have one form. Is candid we have anymore? It's just the one form. So we're going to invite Susie Nork, Narke. Am I pronouncing that right? To come to the microphone up here. As a community stakeholder, we invite you to take three minutes to address the board.
Hi. This is my first time to do this, so I'm kind of nervous. My name is Susie Narke, and I am a teacher here. I teach 3rd grade at Osceola's Elementary. I've been an educator for 25 years, 16 at my school. And today, I just felt like I needed to speak kind of on behalf of some teachers and just kind of what's been going on and just get it out there and speak my opinion. Today was a hard day at my school. We had a lot of teachers crying and kids crying and things like that because we had to have a teacher move to another school. And while I know that happens, I completely understand capsize for classes. And I know there was a campus that was overcrowded, and our campus, you know, had lower numbers. I 100% understand that. I understand the money. I get that. I don't have a solution. But I just wanted to share the side from the teachers and the students just how difficult it is to remove a teacher after five weeks of school who is already bonded with their kids. We've done routines. We've done procedures. We've met the kids. We've met their families. We've put up our classrooms, you know, and all of that takes so much work. And then we're five weeks into school, and a teacher has to be removed. And again, like I said, I understand it's just extremely difficult. We have a lot of students at our school who leave for another country and come back usually in October kind of thing. And so we always get more students in October. And what happened, this happened last year. We lost a teacher. While the other campus, I know they're relieved because they got an extra teacher, and I know that's awesome. But then our campus became crowded because October came and we did get more students again. And so I don't know what the solution is. I don't know how registration can be better. I don't know how to get the numbers more accurate at the beginning of the year to prevent this from happening. Like I said, I don't have a solution. I guess I'm just asking, I don't know, to look at policy, to try and see what we can do about it. I also know the teacher that has to move has been at our school for six years. And we have two brand-new teachers this year who are in a different grade level. But because of policy, the teacher who's been here six years has to leave. And so at times, it seems unfair. Like I said, I just wanted to speak on behalf of teachers and students. It's just a really difficult thing when that happens. Again, I don't have a solution, but I appreciate you hearing me out. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Narke. We appreciate your concern for all of our teachers and all of our students. Next on our agenda is the non-action items for discussion. First of all, we'll hear from the board, the Bond Oversight Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Shackman, trustees, Dr. Eldridge. I think it was about a year ago that we were here, the October meeting, to go through the guidelines of potential membership of the 2023 Bond Oversight Committee. Since then, we have had the committees formed. Of course, a big charge of that is to ensure that the district and its construction and its direction is in line with the 23 bond that committee, community members voted on and approved. You all approved in January of '23. And this is the second iteration of that Bond Oversight Committee. The first was in 2018. And so part of the charge of the Bond Oversight Committee is to give an annual report on the status of the meetings, what's been discussed, those things. We have two board members who are ex-officio members, Ms. Herbaczek and Ms. Brady, of course. We also have Joe Porter, who's on the Bond Oversight Committee. She's with us tonight. And then I will also introduce a face that no one needs introduction to because she is very involved in the school district, and that's Ms. Catherine Carlin. She's the chair-elect. And so she is going to give the Bond Oversight Report this evening to you all as school board members. Mrs. Carlin?
Thank you. President Shackman, members of the board, Dr. Eldridge. My name is Catherine Carlin, and I'm a co-chair of the Bond Oversight Committee. So you hopefully have gotten a copy of our annual report, the 2023-2024 Annual Report of the 2023 Bond Oversight Committee. And so we've completed our first year of that committee's commitment. Members of the committee include co-chairs Nancy Klein and myself, No Franco, Phil Gumbert, Tom Hammons, Billy Bob Messer, Wesley Newt, Jolynn Porter, who's here tonight, and Jamie Rivas. As you know, Tara Herbaczek and Kim Brady are our trustee liaisons. Chris Moore has been our facilitator and has provided us support throughout our tenure, and we're grateful for his leadership. We appreciate the opportunity to learn about the important investments being made to support our students, faculty, and staff and community, and we thank you for your confidence in us with this mission. As you know, the Bond Oversight Committee, BOC, serves in a voluntary advisory capacity to the trustees and administration. And in a nutshell, it's viewed as a resource to help assure that the intentions of the 2023 Citizens Bond Planning Committee, which were approved by the voters in May 2023, are being executed. So on behalf of the committee, I'd like to summarize a few key points in the report, and then we'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have. Our committee meets quarterly. The meetings typically include an update from Corey Blackburn, who's from Construction Services, and he would give us a status, a timeline, and financials on construction projects, after which we could ask questions and provide any input. Other administration and staff would present based on the overall topic of that meeting. Your packet contains the minutes from all four of those meetings that we have. So specifically, just a couple of key points. At our first meeting in October was basically an introduction to the elements of the 2023 bond along with the adoption of the guidelines and the election of the chairs. At that point, we also discussed campus fencing options as well as an overview of the fiber optic project. At the January 2024 meeting, there was a Q&amp;A session to address some specific questions that arose during the October fiber optic presentation. CFB pre-K and special services staff presented overviews of their project needs, included in the 2023 bond. And then WOLPert presented their strategy in assessing facilities and capacity. In April, we received a more in-depth special services update and really began the discussion of the pre-K updates and their options. July was our final meeting of the year, where we received the pre-K options, locations, location benefits, and challenges. The BOC approved the funds adjustments associated with a shift in where pre-K renovations will proceed and where funds will be invested in campuses where the need is greater. At that meeting, we received an update on the facility's master plan and learned that a citizens advisory group is being formed to discuss options and recommendations that were included in that WOLPert facility assessment. We have a single action item to propose, which is for the possibility of meeting more frequently. The 2018 Bond Oversight Committee met bimonthly throughout its tenure, and so that we understand that there could be a possibility that there may be bond issues that arise that would need addressing more frequently than our quarterly meetings right now. So we'd like to have that flexibility. That concludes the elements of our report, and we're available to respond to comments and questions from the trustees and superintendent at any time. Thank you. Do you have any questions?
Questions? Just one quick clarification. When you say bimonthly.
Oh, yeah.
Every other month?
Bimonthly, semi-monthly? No, it's like every, it's, we meet quarterly. And the 2018 met every other month.
Right, okay.
Right, I know, there's.
So not twice a month?
No.
Okay.
Yes, every other month.
Thank you. Thank you, Catherine and Jolynn, for being here. And then to the rest of the BOC, you know, my thanks. I think I've said it in our meetings, and I've probably set it up here. I don't know. But I think it's so critical for the participation of this committee, especially to ensure that we, as trustees, have that assuredness that the intent is being met. And sometimes, if we don't get to go through the details or see that and have those, that there's someone back checking that. And to clarify, you know, the Board of Trustees is the only entity that would approve the expenditure of funds that the Bond Oversight Committee would ensure and give us the voice that it is in line with our bond, what the voters did, and then provide us with that feedback through Ms. Brady and myself so that we can make the best decision for our district and our students and our staff and our taxpayers. So I appreciate y'all's efforts.
You know, and if I might add on to that. So even though our mission is sort of tactically to make sure that what the facility committee, what the citizens facility committee came up with and the citizens approved, that the oversight of this helps us in the next bond process because we've got a way to, you know, confirm and, you know, authenticate, I guess, that what the citizens approved is how the money got spent. This last go-around, there was a ton of social media that said, "Well, they're just spending it on whatever they want to spend it on," right? They're just spending regardless of how we wanted the money to be invested. And we're like, "No, no, 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 no." There was this oversight committee, and I can assure you, we met to make sure that these are being, you know, that the money that you approved is being spent on the projects that you approved them for. So I think that sort of a longer range, it helps that credibility for our next bond process.
Any other questions, comments? School financing to build and expand facilities in Texas is available really with only bond process. And one of the things that you all help our trustees do is ensure the reliability of bonds to our citizens, and we thank you for that.
And we appreciate the support. Thank you.
Good. Next item is to take a look at our various agenda items. Audience, yes. Turning the pages here. We're up to our. No, we're going to. There we got it. Ms. Keane, Accountability and Assessment Update.
Good evening, Dr. Eldridge, President Shackman, and members of the board. Thank you for the opportunity tonight to share the 2023-24 STAR and EOC Accountability Data Subset. The scores seen tonight reflect information on student performance in CFB ISD for the 2023-24 school year. Tonight's presentation features an update on the 2024 A- through F ratings distributed by the Texas Education Agency, or TEA. We'll take a look at the STAR and EOC assessment results reflecting the recently released TEA data calculations and the consideration of the 2024, excuse me, 2025 to 2030 House Phil III Board Goals that are pending board approval. I want to take a moment, though, to thank the board for all the support given to our teachers and our students via your participation at numerous events throughout the school year, communicating with the public and with our community frequently, and then making the financial decisions, which continue to provide resources throughout our school year. So beginning with the 2024 A- through F Accountability. This past spring, CFB ISD students, as well as students all across the state, took their end-of-course assessments in the State of Texas Assessments of Academic Readiness, or STAR. Throughout the summer, TEA released different levels of student data and scores, and the Learning and Leadership Department got to work on making updates and adjustments to our curriculum to support all of our students' needs. On August 13th, TEA was scheduled to release the 2024 Accountability Subset data as well as campus and district ratings. They were then planning on releasing that data to the public via TexasSchools.gov on August 15th. As you already know, TEA has been issued a temporary restraining order to pause the release of ratings while a hearing can occur to discuss the third-party evaluation of the STAR test with TEA. While we weren't fully anticipating this, we are happy to report that our curriculum team hasn't deviated from making adjustments for our students. TEA had a scheduled hearing on August 26th. That has now been postponed to September 16th. And so once we do learn more on the status of the 2024 A- through F ratings, we will keep you updated with that information. Looking at TELPASS. TELPASS is an English language proficiency assessment aligned to the Texas English Language Proficiency Standard, or the ALPS. And this test is taken annually by our students, who remain classified as emergent bilingual, which means that they are still acquiring English in the areas of reading, writing, listening, and speaking. So when comparing our TELPASS performance from the spring of 2023 to 2024, we first see the large number of students testing. As we shared throughout last school year, we had around 1,900 newcomers come to our district, which made up roughly 19% of our EB population. So it would be reasonable that we'd see an increase in the number of students earning a beginner performance level when their English language is being measured. Our percentage of students who received a performance level of advanced high increased this year, which we see correlates to the number of reclassifications. And so we are happy to celebrate the significant number of reclassifications this school year. CFB reclassifications went from 89 in 2023 to 820 this past school year. This shows the tremendous work of our teachers, who provide linguistic support to our students as students needed to earn advanced high on two of the four TELPASS domains and pass their STAR or EOC reading assessments. So when comparing all subjects and tests, all subjects tested across all grade levels that were eligible to be tested, we see that in 2024, the district had 74% of students meeting the passing standard, which is in line with the region and slightly higher than the state. Something to keep in mind as we review a lot of data is that the state made a significant change in the scoring method of our assessments, which now uses an automated scoring engine instead of human graders, who were utilizing a rubric previously. As you may remember, we did share with you back in June that the automated scoring engine was new this year and impacted the scoring of the short and extended written responses that were required across the tests. So now we'll move into the subject area results. This data here represents all reading scores in CFB. That's from our 3rd grade students all the way through our high school EOC assessments. And so as you can see, the state, region, and district are similar in performance results. The state and region decreased by 2% from the prior year, while the district saw a decrease of only 1%. Now, looking at a grade-level view, we see in elementary reading, language, arts, we see that the district has consistently exceeded the state and region in all elementary grades. Our student performance in elementary RLA shows a strong proficiency in this area. It's important to note that in addition to the automated scoring engine changes, we know that the 2024 tests, which were similar to the 2023 tests, had writing components embedded within the assessment through those short and extended constructive responses. The data that you do see here does represent the English version and the Spanish version of tests combined. So we do want to thank the board for their investment in resources, such as adaptive curriculum programs like Progress Learning, ICE Station, as well as the supplemental reading resources from H&amp;H. We do believe that these played a significant role in increasing our student achievement. Here, we can see that the state, region, and district are trending similarly in student performance across 6th through 8th grade. Across all of these grades, CFB ISD students performed within 1% of the state performance. It's important to note, in contrast to elementary, that all middle school students take an English version, as there is not a Spanish version available to students who take that test. Similar to middle school, the state, region, and district are trending similarly again in student performance in English 1. And while the state and region dropped 5% from the previous year, CFB saw a decrease of only 2 percentage points in the midst of changes to the scoring methods. Interestingly, when comparing the state, region, and district performance from 2024, it's the exact same percentages as what the state saw in 2023. Here, we can see that CFB ISD surpassed the region and state when looking at all grade levels tested in mathematics. So as we turn to a grade-level analysis, starting with elementary mathematics, we see that the district consistently had the highest percentages of students meeting the passing standard across all grades. The region generally performed better than the state in most grades, and we continue to celebrate the work being done here in CFB as the district does make gains in elementary mathematics across all grades. For middle school mathematics, we see that overall, the region generally performed better in 6th and 7th grade, while the district showed a notable improvement in 8th grade, achieving the highest percentage there. achieving the highest percentage there at 76%. As we've mentioned in years past, if a student is in advanced mathematics in sixth grade, then they'll become eligible in their advanced seventh-grade course to take the eighth-grade mathematics STAR assessment instead of that seventh-grade STAR test. This past year, we had 62% of our seventh-grade students participating in advanced math, which led to the completion of the eighth-grade STAR test. The district worked this summer to look at the seventh-grade on-level curriculum and analyze the most effective levers to promote changes to support those students who are taking the seventh-grade math STAR. And here, again, we see that CFB surpassed the region and state with 82% of our algebra testers receiving approaches grade level and higher. Now, we'll take a look at science. Science also experienced writing elements within the assessments, which were scored with the automated scoring engine, and CFB performed above the state in 2024 and was aligned with the region. Fifth grade, eighth grade, and biology EOC are the only three levels tested in the area of science. And CFB was above the state and region in fifth grade science, just below the state in eighth grade science, and equivalent to the state and region in biology. For our social studies assessments, which are taken by only eighth grade and US history students, saw alignment with the region and scored 1% above the state in 2024, when both of those assessments are combined. When we look at them separately, we see the comparison of eighth grade to US history. CFB is aligned in US history, while 1% below the state and 4% below the region in eighth grade. So remembering all the way back to 2015, the House Bill III Board Goals were a result of the Texas Higher Education Strategic Plan, called the 2015-2030 Plan, which declared that by the year of 2030, at least 60% of Texans ages 25 to 34 would have a certificate or a degree. And so, by the year 2020, then all school districts were charged to actually monitor that third-grade mathematics, third-grade early childhood literacy, and our college, career, and military readiness indicators as a progress measure for how students were progressing through school in order to meet that goal by 2030. Our goals look at early childhood literacy and mathematics for our third-grade students through the state assessment data. We track the percentage of students who meet grade level or above each year leading up to the spring of 2030. So as, as for college, career, and military readiness, we are looking at the percentage of students graduating with at least one of many indicators that are used to demonstrate that our students are equipped with the necessary skills or next steps needed for post-graduation. As you'll remember, due to COVID-19 disruptions on student instruction and state testing, our House Bill III Board Goals were revised during the March 4th, 2022 Regular Session Board Meeting, and then we used the STAR performance data from the 21, the 2021 school year. And that was our first data set following the cancellation of the 2020 state testing due to that pandemic. So here's a timeline for your reference to have a general idea of when the previous board goals were set and adjusted. And as I mentioned, in May 2020, those initial goals were set, and then they were adjusted in March 2020 using the baseline of the state's projections. And so, we've continued to monitor our progress through the state assessments to give you updates annually on third-grade students in math and reading language arts who earn a meets or above on their performance standards. So we are now at the point in time where we need to look at these next years in order to establish goal measures from now until spring of 2030. Looking more specifically to those previously revised goals in that way, you're reminded and the public viewers are able to see what was set as a goal. Key, key things here to keep in mind are that these targets were based on the students performing at the meets grade level, and the scores increased each year, beginning in 2019 and ending here in 2024, which was this last school year. And so, just keep in mind that the state's goal and intention is to reach 60% by 2030. So the graph here shows a green line, which is set at 60% and represents that initiative of TEA for our third-grade students at the meets grade level performance indicator. You can see here that we surpassed the House Bill III Board Goal with 51% of our third-grade students earning a meets grade level on our reading STAR test. This is an increase of 4 percentage points over last year. Again, I have provided the green line at 60%, representing that initiative of third-grade mathematics students at the meets grade level indicator. We had a 4% goal increase from 2023 to 24, and we were able to meet that goal of 49%, which puts us on track with our House Bill III Board Goal for our third-grade mathematics students earning a meets grade level score on STAR. That is a rigorous goal that was met here. The goal of CCMR departments across the state of Texas is to ensure that all Texas high school students have access to high-quality pathways to careers and colleges. And we see these opportunities through advanced academic offerings, through career and technology education courses, as well as providing guidance for our students interested in the military services. I love these pictures because these are our students being introduced to what could come next for them after high school. And so, here are the multiple ways that students can demonstrate their readiness in college, or being career, or being militarily prepared. And so, by the many indicators that the state has us track, we're looking at students who score a 3 on AP exams or a 4 on IB exams. They have to meet TSIA criteria, and we can see that through either SAT or ACT, the TSIA II, our college prep courses in English and in math. If a student completes a dual-credit course, so that means nine hours in any subject, or if they complete three hours in English or mathematics, if they earn an associate's degree, if they complete an on-ramps course, if they earn a Level 1 or a Level 2 certificate, they could earn an industry-based certification. They could complete a program of study in career tech education. Or if they graduate with a completed IEP and are deemed workforce-ready, they could also enlist in one of the armed forces. Again, many ways to track if our students are considered career, college, or military-ready post-high school. And so, here we look back at the last several years for our CCMR board goals, and we can see that we were committed to setting rigorous goals, even post-COVID, for our students. And it's important to note that while the initiative was first set as 60% by 2030, TEA then also adjusted what was considered to be an A-scaled score for CCMR, which is now 88% of our students. And so, our goal for the class of 2024 was 75%. Please keep in mind that while CCMR goals are set yearly, these are lagging indicators, meaning we strive to meet the goal, but the data won't be used until the following accountability year. So here, you'll see that our class of 2023, which is, or would be, included in our 2024 Accountability data, is 61%, and that is a 1% increase from the class of 2022. This is based on preliminary indicators, but the class of 2024, which will be included in the 2025 Accountability, has a projected overall CCMR percentage of 86%. So you'll see that I added a blue line here, which highlights TEA's score of 88, which would scale our district to an A in CCMR for accountability ratings. So we have far surpassed the 60% goal for TEA's 60 by 30, but we are maintaining rigorous goals as we are striving to achieve an A rating in CCMR. And I don't want to miss this opportunity to thank our CTE teachers, our core department teachers who provide support for our college prep courses, who provide support for SAT and TSIA II assessments, our campus staff who've worked to check their campus systems and to make effectively astonishing gains in CCMR. And then, of course, I don't want to miss the opportunity to express gratitude to the CTE and CCMR departments, the principals, the CCMR deans who spent the year tracking the data to ensure accuracy for the state. I can't tell you how important this is, that we have accurate data going to the state, especially knowing all the work that goes into reaching thousands of students to make sure that we know that they are career, college, or military-ready. And so, a special thanks to our coordinators leading those efforts, Aurora St. Laurent, and then also Leanne Stone. And so, we're just incredibly proud. And if I had the budget that my husband would allow, I would have had a confetti cannon going off, because this is remarkable growth from CCMR. And so, I would love a round of applause for this number, because this is incredible work, just all in, incredible, incredible growth. So, tracking and monitoring of our CCMR data is done throughout the year as students complete SAT, as they complete their TSIA assessments, as they go through dual-credit courses, those industry certification tests, AP exams. And so, last spring, the department explored programs to help monitor the district's CCMR data and then provide actionable data to campuses to ensure compliance and support for college planning. And so, this fall, we are implementing the SchoolLinks program that will help counselors and students plan their college or career journey. And so, with this single platform, we'll be able to track CCMR data. We're going to be able to support our students with their college searches, their career exploration, and my personal favorite, we're going to have access to accurate data that are going to give us the best projections possible. So SchoolLinks does enable our district to satisfy state reporting requirements without placing an undue burden on the counseling team, an undue burden on the CTE team, and the Accountability Department. Student data is accessible, is transparent, from completion and graduation metrics to assessment scores and post-secondary trends, so you don't have to wait for reporting season to take action. Additionally, multiple users will be able to access this data at any given time, which will provide us opportunities to intervene early if needed. And so, here's an example of a dashboard that shows the post-secondary goal breakdown, so we can not only identify our plans for our CFB graduates, but also be able to see what their interests are, and so that will be able to guide our CTE programming decisions. Lastly, on tonight's agenda, we take a look at the remaining years of the 60 by 30 planning. Again, we wrapped up those first five years, and so now we look here. So on the road to 2030, our content directors track our data throughout the school year with these goals in mind. So first, the percent of third-grade students that score meets grade level or above on STAR mathematics will increase from 49% to 65% by June of 2030. Second, we would want that to see that our percentage of third-grade students that score meets or above on STAR reading will increase from 46% to 64% by June 2030. So pending board approval with these goals will hit our 60% goal by 2029 for both math and reading language arts for our third-grade students. And so, while the state set that goal of 60 by 30, the district is now aiming for an A rating in CCMR, which is 88%. And so, as you saw in the prior slide, we have surpassed that 60% goal. So the remaining five years of targets, we've set aggressive increments to reach 90%. Now, of course, it's always possible that the state can change those goals or requirements for CCMR indicators, and so we'll continue to strive to exceed the target. And so, each year, our graduating class has different dynamics and interests, so we'll continue to strive to exceed our annual goal. And this year's target is to reach a minimum of 79% of our graduates to meet the criteria for CCMR. So by 2030, we will increase to 90%. So tonight's key takeaways, we, we know that the 2024 A through F accountability is currently on hold. The next hearing is set for September 16th, and we will let you know if that actually happens. Elementary mathematics and English language arts are exceeding the state averages. We do have adaptive curriculum programs that have increased student mastery through those prescriptive interventions. And we do have new strategies for tracking student mastery of standards throughout the school year that will identify areas of acceleration for students who need acceleration, and then also for the students who need remediation. Additionally, secondary Algebra I, US History, and Biology are above the state averages despite changes in the scoring methods. And then, we have seen substantial gains in CCMR for the 23-24 school year. Our new data-tracking tools will help campuses ensure that all students are CCMR-ready. We know that we have the best community of educators and families in the metroplex. And so, again, I want to thank the board for supporting the substantial work that our campus administrators, teachers, and staff continue to provide for our students and families. Do you have any questions that I am able to answer at this time?
Ms. Keane, thank you so much. Board members, questions? Ms. Hatfield.
Ms. Keane, I know you're not surprised that I have questions. First of all, thank you for your presentation, always so thorough. And you just, everything just rolls right off the tongue. So, thank you for the presentation, but also thank you for spending time with the board and some of the other staff members a few weeks ago, doing the deeper data dive with us, because there is, what you, the public are hearing tonight, we have already heard components of this in a deep-dive session where we were able to talk about and ask additional questions. So I appreciate the time that you guys spent with us, and I'm looking forward to continuing to that journey. Can you go very far back, all the way to reclassification, and just one more time, define, like, what did that reclassification mean? Because that was also a huge difference, but I just needed it one more time to make sure I understood it.
Absolutely. So, in 2023, students had to receive advanced high on all four domains, reading, writing, listening, and speaking. And so, they also have to pass their reading STAR test in order to reclassify. Additionally, in the 2024 spring TELPASS, the measurement moved from having an advanced high in all four. The state recognized that our students are growing, they are learning. And so, they looked at that requirement and said, if they have an advanced high in two of the four, but their overall is advanced high, they are now able to classify, reclassify, meaning they'll no longer be an EB student. Not that they're not going to get support anymore, but they won't have to take the TELPASS test next year. We also know that we implemented sidelet supports for our teachers. We had so many students coming in who weren't proficient in the English language this school year. And so, our teachers worked tremendously hard. What I didn't take an opportunity to really celebrate, which I should have, is that progress rate. So we see there, it was 48% in 2023, and that moved to 51%. And so, we talked all year last year about how many students were coming to our community, and yet we still saw a 51% growth in our students who took this assessment. That's tremendous. And so, that should be celebrated as well. I will get another confetti cannon for the next time that I talk about TELPASS to go off, because that is tremendous effort.
Okay, well, let me see if we can make that confetti cannon hit again. And then, I just wanted to draw attention again to the seventh-grade math. I know we talked about this. And so, I really appreciate how you drew attention to the fact that we're really working on our curriculum there. But I know you guys also talked about the fluency component for before seventh grade, and how important it is for our younger students to be getting that fluency. And so, I really appreciate the attention that you guys are giving to us, because I truly believe that this can be better. I know that that is a large pot of students that are going into advanced math, but the ones that aren't going into advanced math have to pass algebra, they have to do all the things still. And so, I really appreciate the additional attention you guys are giving those students. And then, the next thing I had on my list was approaches versus meets. So, just for the benefit of the public, the first part of our presentation really focused on that approaches level, and then the second part of the presentation focused on that meets level. So can you give us the definitions, for the benefit of the public, of the difference between approaches and meets?
Of course. Yes, ma'am. So when a student reaches the passing standard or approaches grade level, that means that the growth that they showed through the school year is that they are showing enough knowledge that they are able to go to the next grade level, but they're going to need remediation, they're going to need support, they're going to need tiered instructional support from their teachers. If they met the grade level, they are able to go to the next grade level, but they may need a little bit of intervention. We know that if a student masters the content, they're going to the next grade level, they're going to need very little to no intervention at all.
Thank you. I think it's really exciting to see the growth that we're projecting and what we're hoping for. So I appreciate the new, new goals that you guys have brought forward. And then, my last thing was about CTE and CCMR. First of all, I think we also need to thank our taxpayers, because they invested heavily in our facilities. And when students have high-quality facilities that they can do career and technical education in, then it's showing that it's making a difference. So I just wanted to, in addition, of course, our staff are amazing, they're working in those facilities, making great things happen for our kids. But the taxpayers invested in these areas, in the bond programs. And so, I just want to highlight and appreciate that we're seeing, we're reaping the rewards now of the investment we've made. So thank you to our teams, and thank you to our taxpayers.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Board members, any, go ahead.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
And I'm going to say it again, that the STAR results and data is not representative of all the great things that happen every single day in our campuses, but this is what the state has provided us, and so- the state has provided us, and so this is what we use right now for our accountability. I think there's a lot of positive information in here. I think you know I'm excited about the statement of the areas for acceleration. I think that's been a gap, and so I look forward to hearing or seeing the results of that. On the data for the CCMR, and I'm sorry, now the name, school, the name is escaping me. What's the program, the data?
School Links.
Yes. Three minutes, and I can't remember, but, oh, the School Links. So is this data student? How is the data captured? Is it all student entered? Is it counselors? Is it mixed? Is it?
There's going to be a little bit of both. So, the tracking piece will be as we receive scores, we'll upload it into the system. As students are selecting courses with their counselors, that's also going to go in here, and so we're going to be able to keep an eye on their pathways to make sure that, you know, if it's a program of study, if that's their plan, their goal, and that's how they're going to show that they are CCMR met, that we are keeping an eye on that. Meaning if a student makes a choice in their sophomore year, we want to make sure that they see through that program of study. That way, when they leave high school, they have a program of study that they have completed with an industry-based certification. And so this will be a great visual for all of us to be able to see. It'll be, it'll show great reports to give you guys updates on our students. But to answer your question, most of it will be data that we upload into, at least the tracking side, while the counselors and students are able to do more of the course registration side.
Okay.
So it will be both.
So, but this doesn't replace the effort by our counselors in working with our students on developing their plan? I mean, we're not going to be solely dependent on a dashboard to tell us that our, an individual student will graduate with the courses they need.
Absolutely. So this is not auto-selecting a career path for them. This is not auto-doing anything. It'll still be interactive, it'll have to be on the course side, working with the student in order to select their next courses. This is just going to give us indicators to make sure, if we need to intervene anywhere, that we haven't missed a student, which nobody wants to do that, but especially a new student coming in, they're going to automatically be on the dashboard. We want to make sure that we have a plan for every student that they're, they have chosen, that they are aware of. That way, we can make sure that when they leave us, they are CCMR met.
Okay. And on our STAR results and data, and I don't know if y'all have given any more consideration into, you know, looking at our data cohort view from that, because, you know, I really believe that digging into that will highlight different successes and different areas of improvement. And specifically, when I do that analysis on our 2024 data in the cohort they would be now, you know, to the seventh grade, seventh grade math, sixth grade math, we got to focus, I mean, we got to do something.
Yes. We actually, you'll have that information tomorrow. So we actually took a look at our students who were, who took algebra as eighth graders this year. You'll be able to see back to how they did in seventh grade, taking the eighth grade test, how they did in sixth grade, and so we'll have that to you tomorrow.
Okay, great. I really appreciate it, because I really think that is a way to also focus on our students, where we can see the growth of year over year, year over year, because when we look at it as, you know, fourth grade, fourth grade, fourth grade every year, it's different students, different things. And I think the cohort view is a true path and a true look at how we are doing, how we are serving our students based on their performance.
We stand those.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thanks, I appreciate it.
The only thing I wanted to say is I love your verbiage of astonishing gains. Thank you so much. Thank you for your report.
Thank you.
So are we going to see a confetti cannon in your budget projection for next year?
Not here and not at home.
Not here, not at home.
We can confirm that.
Thank you so much for both the good news and the detailed report.
Yes, thank you.
Our next item is the consent agenda, and so we'd ask that we take a look at the consent agenda. It is a mechanism the board uses to approve a number of routine items. In compliance with the Texas Open Meeting Act, the public notice for this meeting includes a list of all consent agenda items, and the board has been provided ample information about these items in advance. Prior to any action taken on the consent agenda, board members may request withdrawal of individual items for clarification or discussion. Board members, are there any items for removal from the consent agenda? Ms. Hatfield?
Maybe.
Five F.
Five F.
Five F.
Okay. Any other items? With the removal of five F, do I have a motion regarding the consent agenda? Ms. Brady?
I move that we approve the consent agenda as provided, with the exception of five F.
Have a motion that we approve the consent agenda with the exception of five F? Is there a second? Ms. Benavides, second? Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. It is unanimous. Consent agenda passes with the removal of five F. Next item on our agenda is the item six, items for discussion or action. First is A, we'll be looking at five F from the consent agenda. So, Ms. Hatfield, would you?
I just, I thought that pulling out the consent agenda would give the board an opportunity to have a conversation, because I think the administration has put forward some rigorous goals, being that the goal from the state was 60%, but we are setting rigorous goals at 65 and 64% for math and reading for third grade, and that's at the meets grade level, which is really important, because it's not just approaches, it's meets.
Right.
And to this point currently, we've had some adjustments over time in how we track this, and sometimes we've gotten map updates, because I know the MAP test has three different administration timelines before the STAR test, sometimes it's after the STAR test, depending on the MAP timelines. So I think in the past, we've had a little bit of inconsistencies in the number of updates the board has gotten and how we're monitoring these goals. And so I really wanted, the reason why I pulled this item was not to, I don't have any concerns about the goals, I'm very proud of the goals, I think that they are striving to be the best we can, but I wanted to have a conversation with the board about their feelings about if the updates we've traditionally got are MAP updates, is that what the board wants to continue to see, and what discussions were we going to continue to have over time? So we've done a great job of having our data meetings that are really one-on-one or two-on-one, sometimes three-on-one, making sure that we don't have any quorum issues, but we have not collectively been able to look at data. So even what Ms. Herbachek mentioned about looking at cohort data, we are not collectively looking at that data and really hearing what Ms. Herbachek is seeing in the data, or hearing what any of us are really seeing in the data, because we're looking at it one-on-one or in small groups. So I just wanted to, the reason why I pulled this was really to have a conversation about, like, what do we as the board see as strategic ways that we want to look at data moving forward? And if tonight's not the right time for that conversation, I completely understand, but I did want to bring it up, that I think it's really important that our job is student achievement, that's why we're here, and so I wanted to bring it to the board for discussion.
Comments? Yes, Ms. Brady?
I hear what you're saying. Part of me says, do we want to add this to our work-study agenda for September and add this topic? Because I think it's a topic worth discussing, because you're right, that's why we're here, is student and our student outcomes. So I would be willing to postpone this item until next month, with the understanding that we're going to discuss it at our September 19th board meeting, or, excuse me, work-study.
Just for clarification, do you mean postpone the approval of the goals, or just postpone the discussion?
Postpone the approval. Thank you for clarifying.
Oh, okay.
Unless we're ready to approve it tonight, and then we can always adjust later, after we have our discussion.
And, am I good?
Yeah, good.
And I think approving the House Bill goals tonight, I mean, that's required of us, and I don't know the timeline of when it has to be done every year or anything like that, but I think the House Bill goals, yes, they are, I mean, they're great, they're rigorous goals, and I'm glad to see that kind of focus on them. But I think the real question, I'm going to piggyback on what you said, is really just, I think, the monitoring of the data through and how we're trending on those goals. And, I mean, I think MAP data is the only way we can see any kind of year progress, I don't know, I'm not the educator, y'all correct me if I say something wrong, but that's the way we had identified, that that's how we would kind of estimate our progress or estimate, or try to estimate where we would end up with STAR. So I think we do need to have the discussion on what, you know, regular schedule that we want to see that information, but also that the goals, I mean, we have House Bill III goals, we have different board goals, we have district goals, we have superintendent goals, we have campus goals, and I am goal confused. I mean, I, and I don't know, and I don't know how they tie, I mean, and how we are driving the work, so that Dr. Eldridge notes how to guide her team to get the results. And we've talked about this before, about our goals and tie-in, and I think that's the discussion, and data is with the goals, because that's how we would, we would measure it. So I want to agree with Ms. Brady, I think we do need to add it to a work-study, so we can get that set, because at our, what's that, is that next week, or it might not be? I mean, we're already a month and a half in almost of the year, and I think we need to set the expectation on guiding the work, and maybe narrow down our goals, because I'm goal confused.
Can I talk? You ready for me? Okay. So I think with the evaluation of the CV 2030, and Ms. Holcomb and I have been collaborating also as far as the district improvement plan and the campus improvement plans, and I think what we have found in our collaboration is they're all overlapping, and so we did discuss the timeline to provide you all with data. So what we're going to do at the work-study is, and after you see Ms. Holcomb's presentation tonight, with the discussion of CV 2030 and the district plan, I think it'll all tie in nicely, and you'll also see the timelines of when we would also be discussing our achievement and our achievement goals and what the data is telling us. So I think we don't want you to be goal confused, we're going to wrap it up in a bow, so we've been working on it. So I just want to, I think we, you know, the goals are set, but then how you see it and how you can tell that we're really excited about the work, you'll be able to see it consistently.
Okay, I can't talk yet.
So, but also to your, but we have the, you know, great data to action, you know, one-on-one or with two board members from that, but I do think there's benefit in hearing from how other board members look at the data, because everybody might focus on something, you know, different. I go straight to math, you know, I mean, that's what I go to, you know, I go straight to math. I want to see that, and I want to make sure, you know, that we're trained on that, but I understand it. So maybe there's something else that other people understand better or have a different perspective, and, you know, what concerns or successes that you saw in the data that I wouldn't understand or what I see. So I think, to your point, discussing it as a group, I think is important as well.
Right. One of the things that I'm proud this board for being is a board that learns and grows. Having been on the board for a number of years, we have finally become, I think, data-focused in an appropriate way. Now, we're still learning and growing how we're going to incorporate that, and how we're going to look at MAP data versus STAR data versus the different things. Couple of things that I think are working in our favor, and Ms. Keen and your team, I appreciate that I feel like the data that you're bringing to us is more consistent than it has been over the years, that it's kind of been, well, some of this and some of that, and this is a look at all of that. And then as a board, I think the discussion for us to be able to say, how are we incorporating this, and how is this really affecting our students? Because the bottom line, if they're not really achieving, it's just a number. And so I encourage us to continue in this way. Other comments? Ms. Hatfield?
I don't have another comment, but I just want to thank board members for entertaining a conversation, because this is what it's really about, is the conversations behind the dais, not just the vote. It's about the work. And this board is working, and we intend to work for kids. So with that, I will make a motion to approve five F, the 24, 25, House Bill III, Early Childhood and CCMR board goals.
I have a motion to approve five F.
I'll second.
Have a second? Any other discussion? All in favor of approving five F? I see set six and a half hands. Seven in favor, thank you very much. And now we get to our consent agenda. We've done that, we've worked through the pieces, so the closed. Oh, yeah, our district improvement plan. I tend to turn two pages at once, my fault. Consider and approve the district campus improvement plans. Ms. Holcomb?
Good evening. As I set down my mini plans, I hear you. Let me get this opened up here. Okay. Thank you, President Shackman, our distinguished members of the board, and Dr. Eldridge. I am pleased this evening to present to you an overview of our campus and district plans. This is going to be a slightly different presentation than we did before. I'm going to highlight and overview some overarching items in the plan, but as you know, this is a collective document, this is just the district plan, but collectively between the district and all of the campus plans, it's 1,515 pages of a lot of hard work. And this is hard work that's done by this entire leadership team, all of our stakeholders, our campuses, feedback from our teachers, community members, a lot of work goes into the plans, but they all have to be aligned. And to your point, Ms. Herbachek, that's very important that there is a string between all of those, and so I hope to bring a little bit of clarity around that tonight, and the presentation will be a little bit different than we did last year, at least. So tonight's presentation is going to be to start with the purpose of our district and campus improvement plans, why we have them, and how they help us to measure our work as well as focus on the right work. In addition, we're going to go through a little bit about the process of how we create them, and then I'll kind of wrap it up a little bit with our strategic alignment to the 24, 25 plans. So starting off, the purpose of our plans really is for both areas, whether it's the district plan or it's the campus plans, is a strategic framework. And that strategic framework is actually used by school districts across Texas, well, probably across the nation, but it actually enhances all of our educational outcomes, and it addresses the challenges that we're facing within our schools. So this is done very strategically with a campus, excuse me, a comprehensive needs assessment that is done at both levels, at the campus and district levels, and many pieces of data are put into that to derive where those priority and focus areas need to be. The district and campus improvement plans are also essential tools for fostering better educational environments and outcomes. They do drive continuous improvement, and they're very important, because as we work on the work and we measure the work and we look at what we need to do the work to get better, these plans are what kind of guide us there. They also ensure that all students have access to high-quality education, which is extremely important and a high priority. The improvement plans also serve some key purposes, and I want to talk about a few of these. The first one, identifying clear strengths and weaknesses. When we have a lot of data and we're data-rich, we can also be information poor because we can have so much data that we don't know what to do with it. And so when we look at the different areas within the plan, we're talking about operations, security, um, curriculum and instruction, there's many different areas that this plan is addressing. So we're looking at attendance data, we look at discipline data, we look at social media data for communications, we look at STAR data, there's so much data that goes into that, but from that we have to identify where we have strengths and where we have priority areas that we need to focus. That also then should set very clear goals for us because while we can't focus on everything, we want to strategically focus on areas of improve, improvement that we know will get us to the next step. In addition, the third one is a very, um, close one to my heart is allocation of resources. When we talk about start, stop and continue, that's something we use a lot in our, um, meetings about, is there something that we need to start that we're not doing? Is there something that we're currently doing or maybe using or possibly funding that we really don't really see the results from? Maybe we need to stop that or possibly want, we want to continue something that's working really well. But regardless, we want to make sure that we're measuring the programs that we are investing in and the things that we're seeing the results in, we want to continue. As Hope mentioned earlier, the School Links program is a very high-quality resource that we do believe is going to address some areas that were difficult in tracking CCMR. But with that said, we also took away a program that was not giving us the results that we needed. So while we invested in the School Links program, we also discontinued the use of another one. We have done that already with probably three or four different programs that were reducing that deficit a little bit at, at a time and we're then re-investing into resources that we believe are higher quality and will potentially give us a better return on our investment. So that's a very important one I wanted to bring up. Um, also they provide a structure, um, or a structured approach. This is important as you're leading the work because we've got many people that are responsible for doing the work. So we can set goals and have things on paper, but it doesn't mean that it's going to be easily executed. And so this does give us timelines, it gives us responsible parties and different ways for us to track and monitor the data. And so that's another very important one, um, for us as well. It promotes accountability so that we can measure progress. We want to continue to invest again in the things that we know are giving us the return on our investments. It engages all of our stakeholders and then also it fosters that long-term improvement, which is really where that Vision 2030 Plan comes in. That's the long-range planning that we're looking to achieve, but in the meantime, there are pieces within Vision 2030 that are already a part of the campus plans and the district plans and all of those are in line with the board goals. And so those are kind of how they all pull together for us. At the heart of all these plans lies the driving force and the foundation, which is the vision of CFB ISD. And I would be remiss to not go through vision, mission and our values because this truly is like the foundation of the house. Uh, this is the beliefs and what we, what we believe, it's our purpose, it's our guiding, uh, uh, it's our pathway, it's where we're headed and it explains and it derives the work that we do. And so it's important for us to see as we look at the posters around our buildings and in our, in our, um, classrooms, that these vision, missions and our values are something we want to always stay very connected to because they are always driving the work that we are doing. So the vision establishes our direction and it establishes our purpose. And it's the district and campus improvement plans that then align to the district's vision and the direction. So CFB ISD will be an exceptional learning community where all graduates impact and excel in a complex interconnected and ever-changing world. And that is the vision that was set for CFB ISD that we continue to value and let it guide us in the direction and purpose. In addition, our mission is slightly different because it actually identifies the what and the how. The mission tells us what are we going to be doing every day and how are we going to do it, and that is how we strive to then meet the vision. The mission of CFB ISD is defined as a diverse community of global learners and it's to empower scholars to acquire lifelong knowledge, skills and values that prepare them to complete, compete in the world marketplace while contributing to their community. Woven into the fabric of all of these plans are the core values of CFB ISD and these values serve as the cornerstone of which all of these plans are built. They also stand as our guiding principles and they always impact and guide our path and move us forward. The values for CFB ISD are excellence in all learning opportunities, respecting differences by embracing diversity, a growth mindset for students, faculty and staff, ongoing partnerships with the community and then support and love of the whole student. So the values again are something that are very, very important and are continuing to guide the work that we do. And as Mr. Shackman mentioned earlier, I think almost everybody can reiterate, high expectations for all. And that poster is right in the middle of the hallway when I walk in every day and it's a great visual and a reminder that we have high expectations, which also ties back to the hard work of the HB III Board Goals. And it's extremely exciting to see that we're setting goals to surpass what the state thought we should be hitting. I remember back in 2019 when those goals were put out and the goals had to be set for a 10-year trajectory and we thought, goodness, have you seen where we are right now at meets because it wasn't anywhere close to 60? And it seemed very lofty and aggressive. And so now that we're already five years in and to see goals that we have already hit are very exciting and so that high expectations, we want to continue to foster and to see that growing. The district improvement plan overview, there are five main guiding objectives and priorities, which I know that you know all very well because this is where the board goals are built around. And that is really where it starts. The board goals are really what then drive the district goals. The district goals are then driving the campus goals and all of this is aligned to hit Vision 2030 for our long-range planning. And while we may not have everything on Vision 2030, you know, checked off the box yet, it's something you want to continue to reevaluate over time because that was set back before COVID. And so there could be some things that now maybe they're not feasible or maybe the, the mindset has changed or possibly the landscape looks different and maybe what was important in 2020 is maybe not where we need to go. So we are currently working on that work. Dr. Eldridge has led a wonderful mission on that and we're going to do a deeper dive on that. Mr. Mersch is also walking us through some, um, great work next week around that. So we're excited to continue to dive deeper into this and see where are we and where do we need to keep pushing and where do we want to kind of revisit and refocus the work? But these five areas are really the collective work of what this entire plan is basically built around, which is also where the board's goals are also living. And so with that, there is a group leader that leads each one of these areas around engaging in diverse learning, that's where our area falls, uh, facility, safety, security and infrastructure, um, to be adaptable to student needs. We also have community engagement, social and emotional health of all students and then optimizing avail, all available resources. So those areas encompass every single one of the district leaders and the hard work that's being poured into the district. The comprehensive needs assessment, this is really where it all starts and this is actually my favorite part because I love data. And, um, I actually saw a T-shirt the other day on Facebook, this is completely, really kind of unrelated, but the shirt I told Hope I had to get it, but I can't use district funds, I'll have to use mine. So if I buy the shirt for the department, Hope, um, it says data or it didn't happen. And I'm like, yes, that is right. So we have so much data, um, but what I like about the data is, um, the fact that it tells the story and we have to investigate what that data is telling us. One source of data is never the answer. And this is not the time for me to get into a deep conversation about STAR in general. STAR is STAR. We have to use STAR, it is our, our measure, the state's going to grade us on that, that it is what it is. And it's important. But with that said, there are also many other pieces of data that are extremely important in how our students are growing and mastering all kinds of areas for the whole child. And that goes back to our values. And so it's important for us to see that a thorough comprehensive needs assessment, when you look at the campus plans, you may see some things on there that you're like, well, I'm not real sure where, where that fits in, does that hit our board goal or does it hit the district goal? There may be a goal that's so specific to that campus that that is a true priority and a need for them, but it may not be for all 38. And so that's where the comprehensive needs assessment needs to be individualized and needs to be prescriptive to the campus. So with that, every single department leader on our SLT team, in addition to all of the other department leaders within our departments, as well as campus leaders, have all put a great deal of time into this because they led their campuses through deep dives, uh, looking at student achievement data and pinpointing the areas of need that they have. This also is work that's done through the District Improvement Council as well as the Campus Improvement Committees. We refer to the district one as the DIC and the campus one as the CIC. And so with those two committees, that is a, a mixture of all stakeholders. So we have community representatives, parents, teachers, all different parties represented in those plans. They help with this needs assessment and that deep dive as well. So strategies for improving are also aligned to those priority areas and those strategies are what you see a lot on the pages of the plans. That's what we're doing and we're going to, um, walk through for innovative practices. I noticed a little bit small on the screen here, um, you can see, I can send this PowerPoint to, um, uh, to you to have as a, to view later, but the main thing I wanted you to see here is I always give an update on the demographics. We are still educating more than about 24,000 students across 38 campuses. I know Dr. Hamlin probably has the exact number, uh, 24, four, something, we're close. And we are still, um, representing about 70 countries and 55 different languages. Our emergent bilingual population, as you've heard over a time, has continued to grow at significant rates. Around 43.54% of our student population right now, uh, could be a little bit higher from when this data was actually calculated. We also have more than 60 programs of choice and approximately 124 career technical course options. So the process and timeline of the plans, um, first thing is, under provisions of TEA, every school district is required to develop a district plan to improve student performance. So that is a requirement. The second thing is important to remember is that it is a collaborative planning process, um, as I mentioned just a minute ago, about the campus improvement committees as well as the district improvement committees. And then the final one there states that the district and campus plans are also developed annually and they're mutually supportive around state goals and objectives from the TEC code. So it's not just what we feel like we need to do in the district and where we want to put our resources, but it's also very important to note that we have to align to the mandates of the state. That's where the House Bill III Board Goals come in and then the adoption of the final five years. So the timeline, how does this look within the district and how do we get to a plan? It starts with the CNA. It really kind of happens throughout the year, but the hard, heavy work really happens between May and July because with the TEA not releasing our STAR data until about June, it's hard for us to get a real good CNA lined up to the STAR without that data. However, we do get started on this earlier because we have MAP data and we have all other types of iStation and di- different diagnostic data. We do one-to-one testing with reading with Fountas and Pennell and lots of other resources. But then of course, the other departments have other data with attendance and discipline and other measures of success. So those are things that we're constantly looking at and formulating, what is the work needing to focus on? And where are we doing well and where do we need to readjust? Again, that start, stop and continue. So from that, we then revise goals and then from revising goals, we then revise our strategies. Are the strategies we're doing working? Are they not working? Do we want to start, stop or continue? I can speak for our department, we did a, you probably noticed in the plans, there was a lot of revisions on our page and you'll see a lot of different pieces on there. I'm going to highlight a few of them, we don't have time to go into all of it, um, but there is a lot of things that we're going to be doing differently that we revised our strategies to make sure we have very clear evidence resource, resources that we can pull every quarter and have a clean vision of that evidence of success and where we are. Something we've talked a lot about, I know in our department, is leading indicators versus lagging indicators. STAR is a lagging indicator and it's something that's, it's done, it's there and we have to then pivot and adjust to it. But what we should be doing is focusing a lot on the leading indicators because we have all of those little breadcrumbs along the way and we need to know if what we're doing is working and if not, where do we pivot and where do we adjust? If we're going to adjust pedagogy in a classroom or adjust financial resources or anything of that nature, we have to make sure that we know where we are. And we don't want to wait until May or June and say, well, next nine months, we'll find that out. We need to be in that work all year long. And so that is really what we've done with our strategies, which I'm going to show you in just a minute, um, to kind of bridge what Dr. Eldridge was mentioning earlier. From the revision of the strategies and the, um, goals, uh, we then do, we, uh, the chiefs did area, uh, work, the area directors chiefs did work sessions and feedback from, for the principals. So they actually kind of set up shop and for multiple days, they had a place for the principals to come and sit with them and walk through their strategies, talk with them, coach them, help them understand, whatever they needed. They were there to help them walk through page by page. And I really want to shout out the hard work that was done by the Assessment Accountability Department and everyone that played a, a hand in that because that was truly a labor of love, but it was very necessary and I know the principals appreciated that time. Once we get through all of that, that's summer work and we're in the process of already revising curriculum goals and resetting pacing calendars and all of that good stuff to see, well, did that do well or did that not do well? So all that's kind of working in the summer. And from that point, we then get to a final plan that is kind of wrapped up about August. And at that point, we then bring those plans to you for approval, which is what we're doing tonight in September. They are living documents, they can be changed, there's things that we may have to edit and if we do, we will come right back to board, we will present those revisions and we will re-approve them if necessary. We hope to not have to do that, but that is something that could happen over time. After they, uh, the board plans, the board approves the plans, we note that in the system, there is a button that we have to put the date the board approves them. And then from that, we then continue to get into the feedback mode of where we are and how we are doing throughout the year. This happens with the District Improvement Council that meets three times a year, also with the Campus Improvement Committees, which meet frequently throughout the year. In addition to that, we have four quarterly monitoring times, which is October, January, March and May. And at that time, you will be able to go into the Plan for Learning System and see the actual data. We type in evidence for every one of the strategies, if we're going to put that we're at 30% of our goal, well, what was the evidence that got us to the 30%? All of that is very detailed within the plans and we also have that noted again at those four times of the year. Those are the leading indicators in addition to the other things that we're doing that are, um, beginning, middle, end of year assessments and other things that we do that are ongoing. And then we get to the end of the year and we do a final check and a progress check and we look to see, did we meet our outcomes? Did we not? Did we meet our goals? And we literally get to the very end and we either slide it to a 100 or we discontinue it or we just, we adjust accordingly. But we literally get to the end of the year and say, okay, how did we do? This was our innovative strategic plan, did it work? Did it not work? And sometimes we have things that are working really, really well. We presented some of those in our Data to Action meetings and then there were others that we were like, you know what, this might need to be a, push this one off and let's try something new. So we are going to try a few things new this year and I'm going to present a few of those now, just so that you can see where a few of the, uh, strategic alignment pieces fell. I know this is small, but I thought it was important for you to see what it really looks like in the plan, uh, because when you go into the Plan for Learning and you pull a campus plan or a district plan, which I know you all have copies of, it's important to see how this is tracked and monitored. You can see on the far right, the four areas of the formative reviews and what you don't see on this screen, but you would see if you're in the program, is the evidence pieces. One of the things that you'll notice here, get my glasses on, this one is our goal number one, which is by May of 2025, the percentage of students at all subjects will increase at a minimum of 5% at meets or higher. So we want to increase by at least 5% on meets and that's our minimum goal. Our strategy that we have here states about training teachers on tracking mastery of standards, which also includes our administrators. It also includes learning targets, alignment to standards, data analysis, um, and you can kind of continue. But one thing to note there are the other things that are listed as evidence of tracking. Mastery Tracker, Edge Euphoria, Multi-Test, Branching Minds, Progress Learning. Why are those important? They're important because they are possible because of the work that you have done as a, as a board. You have given us the financial resources to align to the things that we believe are going to give us the leading indicators that we need and that is extremely important. Dr. Julian's doing some amazing work with Mastery Tracker and Edge Euphoria. It's giving our teachers tools to dive in and see, when we do a unit assessment or a weekly assessment or a common assessment or a district assessment, we do all kinds of assessments throughout the year. And all of that data lives in the program that gives us leading measures of, hey, if I said, Chris, let me know how we're doing in October on whatever, he can pull it and tell us. We're also going to be training in our instructional leadership meetings, our principals on how to pull this data and use it to lead a PLC themselves. We're going to be working with teachers on this as well. So it's an ongoing process, but these are a few new things for this year that we're going to dive deep into. Branching Minds is our MTSS platform. Sarah Rowland and I have been working very closely on this rollout for the social and emotional learning piece with behaviors as well as our academic side. This is a data wonderful storehouse of progress over time for all of our students, whether it is remediation or acceleration, we can track anything we want to. But it gives data of, in a, it puts data in a visual form for us to be able to see what is working and what's not working. It's going to be a very powerful tool for our campuses as well as a compliance piece for TEA, which I'm very excited about. And then finally, Progress Learning, you've heard about that, that's something that we've been doing, um, now for a year and we saw great results with that. We are continuing to dive deeper. Uh, we have expanded the program to high school at high school's request. Uh, we were going to try to minimize that back to just a few and they actually wanted more than we thought that they were going to want and they are using it. So we are super excited about that. Another, uh, strategy that we're going to be doing this year is the Teaks Track, Teaks Tracker. This is a mastery of standards, it is small, but the visual, I'm going to kind of give you as a, a, a high-level overview. This is a color-coded reporting category that we've done, or the, the, the work has been done by the department directors, coaches and specialists, um, is for each tested grade level. So this is an example of sixth grade math and what it has is the reporting category and in each of the columns, it has the unit assessments of when that standard is going to be tested. They can go in. They can go in, sort of like a little temperature gauge, and they can plop in after we've done that first unit assessment, where are we? Are we at 40%, 50%, 60%? How close are we to that high level of meets performance to be able to hit our goals? So if we get it to unit one and we didn't like what we saw, well, we will know if we're going to test on that again in unit two, or three, or four. And if it's not something we're going to test on again, then can we spiral that in and continue to practice that over time? So this is a tool for the district-level staff, for our departments, to measure our work and our performance goals throughout the year, every quarter. We're going to do some deep dives on this. Set goals. And then also, we have copied this for the campuses. The principals wanted their own. They said, we want one of these. We wouldn't be able to do this for our campuses. So shout out to the principals for being also very supportive of the efforts. And then, so it's going to be campus and district-led. So that's kind of something we're rolling out new this year, and it was really funny because we were working on getting these created, and we had a lofty goal to get them ready by like July or August. And August came, and we were close. The department was working hard to get them finished. And about, probably September, I had a few principals texting going, hey, where's those trackers? We're ready. I'm like, we haven't even done the first units yet. Hang on, we got to train you on them. So they're excited about it. Another view for this, it's a strategy that aligns back to something the board has supported, is the view of Progress Learning. So when you see Progress Learning, this is an example of a dashboard that a principal can see, and that is a pre-test of where we are right now in mastery of standards. And across the top is the actual standard, and the color in the middle, we call it the green dot challenge, because we're pushing for the green dot mastery across the board in every standard. So we're using that as a visual to help guide the work, and it really is kind of like a blinking dashboard along the way for us to know where do we need to be focusing extra interventions, time, or resources. And then lining back up to House Full Three Board Goals, which we will not spend any more time on, but I did want to tie this back into where we actually fit this into our plan. And something that we did this year to align to the targets was a vertical alignment to the board goal. We can put the third-grade board goal on, and that's great because we do have to do that by compliance measures, but we have to look and see, well, how are pre-K kiddos progressing? How is kindergarten progressing, first grade and second grade? And what are those leading measures that we need to see growth in before we measure third grade meets performance on STAR, which is deep critical thinking? So what you'll notice, and I'm not going to go into great detail, but you'll see a strategy for pre-K. Every single one of the department directors did a deep dive on their data and presented high-leverage areas of focus, and we nailed it down to things that we felt like were either common threads across the district, or things that we knew were areas that were foundational to learning, that we needed to put focus on. So pre-K, Sandy Myers has done great work on that. Kindergarten first and second aligns to Breonna Burrell, and we're going to be tracking mastery of foundational skills in reading with phonics, phonemic awareness, and reading fluency. We will have evidence for each of those grade levels, and then that will lead us up to the third-grade board goal that we track and monitor according to what board goals we've set. In addition, we have a couple of other strategies on there. We've done something around professional development and coaching, as well as our most common area of improvement this year. From high school down to third grade, every single subject area was continuing focus on writing with revising and editing, mostly due to the way STAR is testing with short constructed responses and extended constructed responses. Again, AI grading or the automated engine scoring, that's another different piece for us, and so all those are going to be learning tools. So we're going to be working on typing skills and a lot of other things that go along with writing for the classroom. A few key takeaways to wrap this up. First and foremost, the strategic framework of our district and campus improvement plans have aligned with short-term goals, as well as long-term goals that do tie into Vision 2030. We also have goals and strategies that have been established collaboratively by all stakeholders, and they do reflect alignment with the established school board goals. Also, student achievement data reflects steady gains despite the significant testing changes from TEA and the significant student population increases of emergent bilinguals. We are nearing, I believe, almost 10,000 emergent bilinguals in our school district, and so that's a significant number that we want to continue to look at. We've already looked at making sure this year that we had planned appropriately for licensing for our language programs to be able to serve all the students that we are blessed to have in our district. And then final, revisions to the 2425 plans do reflect some vertical strategic alignment that is different to increase deeper levels of mastery and strategies for monitoring the leading indicators. And then finally, program and strategy evaluations are ongoing to ensure that we're implementing effective practices for improvement and reducing costs where we can. I want to give a thank you to Mr. Shakman for serving as our board liaison last year on the DIC. We appreciate the work that you did with us, and we are very grateful for Cassandra Hatfield to join us this year, and we look forward to kicking those meetings off very soon. Again, thank you to the school board. This work is not possible without you, and I know I speak for everybody. We thank you so much. So, any questions?
Board members, any? Oh yeah, what, it is great. Tremendous information and just a lot to try to process. The alignment of trying to bring it all together is something that we've been needing to get accomplished. And I think as a board, we obviously excited about moving in such a direction and now to see it happen. It's good, Ms. Happy.
Thank you for the presentation.
We have all the plans. We're working.
Thank you for the presentation and for the opportunity for everybody to kind of all be on the same page. And we have new board members, and so it's good to kind of refresh our memory and bring us back. I know that we intentionally asked Dr. Elders to focus on CV 2030 and get back to that work, and so it's great to see that we are moving in the direction that we need to move, making those connections and to not be goal-confused. And I just, I noticed a difference in the DIP this year. I noticed that the goals not only talked about 2025, but they also reflected the 2030 goal, and that's very helpful to see, like, the end to, where we are now and where we're going. And so I really appreciate that. And then I also just want to shout out to our campuses. There is a, you know, 1,200 pages, a lot of pages, in keyword search, a lot of things. And I noticed that they're really focused on deep eating teachers' learning, that they are really valuing professional learning and recognizing that our teachers are needing to continue to grow in their content and pedagogical knowledge. I also noticed a student achievement intentionality, and then connecting with parents. There was a lot of focus on connecting with our parents and our community and the campus improvement goals, and so I just want to give a shout out to our administrators and our campus teams that worked on that, in addition to the district teams, because we are on a trajectory to make great things happen. And the one thing that I would ask is that, I saw that on your presentation, there were two red dots on the timeline, and what I saw from that was board. And so to me, it looks like we would get an update on the DIP and CIP. When you guys look at your N summative and are you continuing something, discontinuing or accomplish, I would ask that the board be able to see that evidence, because I think that it will help us to, like, we need to value and recognize the work that you're doing. And so when we're able to see that, it helps us to be able to know, to see the work. So I would just request that we'd consider that at the end of this year. Thank you.
Absolutely. Happy to do that, and that really is something we're already plugging in there. So we'll figure out a way to get that shared, whether it's a work-study session or, you know, however that you would prefer to have that. I also want to make sure that I give a thank you to Lori Trainum. Her work around the federal programs and the work around CIPs is tremendously wonderful. She is extremely detailed. She coaches our principals on all the federal pieces that tie in. So I want to make sure that I shouted her out, gave her a shout out, because she has done a lot of hard work on that. So Lori, if you're listening, thank you.
Thank you for your presentation. That was amazing. I'm very excited about the special education tie-in. As Sarah knows, I'm all about special ed too. But to have our general education teachers and our special education teachers be able to talk in the same language, when you talk about TECS and what their kids are struggling with, is going to be tremendous for IEP writing and to be able to focus on what that child needs in order to be successful. So thank you. That's really great.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Any other comments? This is, the schedule is an action item. One of the things I want to point out before we take a look at potentially at making this approval vote is, I learned effectively last year, working with the Improvement Committee, that this is a work in progress. And so while we will, I hope, vote to approve this tonight, doesn't mean that we're setting it in cement. And one of the things that we see on the effective response of our staff is that they are learning and growing with this, making improvements, changes, and all that, and that would be a part of it as well.
Absolutely.
So it is marked for possible action. Board, is there action? Ms. Herr?
I move that we approve item 6B, the CFB ISD District and Campus Improvement Plans.
Okay, I have a motion, yes?
I'll second.
Okay.
I'll second.
Ms. Brady is seconded. All in favor, please raise your hand. Okay, it is unanimous, so. Don't worry for closed session. Yeah. We, at this point in time, the final item on our agenda is a closed meeting, as authorized by government, Texas Government Code. We are going to go into closed session, and you are welcome to stay. You're also welcome to leave if you need to. We'll be in closed session for a while, and then we'll be back for wrap-up. It is currently 9:01.
...
I call this meeting back to order at an open session at 10:35 PM. We were in closed session on item eight, and it is an item that is listed as an action item. Board members, is there a motion that anyone wants to make? Seeing none, we have reached the end of our agenda and this meeting is closed at 10:35.